Welcome to another episode of Municipal Focus. My name is Kevin Tocchi, and I will be your host for this segment. What do we do with this show? Well, the idea of the show is keep you better informed on things that are going on in and around your community and beyond. We don't always necessarily talk about what's happening in the two municipalities that we serve, women or hands. But we also talk about other levels of government. It could be county level, it could be state level, but we try to keep you best informed any way that we can and doing so in front of the cameras. Today, we are in the great town of Hanson. We're in actually the Select Board Room in Hanson Town Hall. Joining us for the conversation, we have Town Administrator Lisa Green.
Hi, Kevin.
And Town Planner Tony DeFrias.
Hi, how are you?
I've actually been practicing Tony's how to say his last name seven or eight times. Hopefully, I don't mess it up. Welcome to the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
So the idea of the conversation today is to talk a little bit about Town Meeting. Town Meeting is coming up. It's usually the first Monday in May, and we have fiscal discussions to have as there's a discussion about an override, and everybody trying to understand what the MBTA Communities Act is all about. For folks who may or may not know, the MBTA Communities Act, more about overlay districts, affects 177 communities, whether they have a commuter rail that goes through their town or one of the adjacent communities. They have to more or less come up with a plan to at least offer additional housing. Now, I'm just giving you the tip of the iceberg. Tony's here to kind of give us the nuts and the bolts and more or less clarity because there are a lot of folks who see it as one thing or may understand a part of it, and there's a lot more than the limited narrative that seems to be going around. So we'll look forward to talking to you about that, Tony.
Thank you.
And Lisa, we probably just get kicked off and talk about the budget. What is this year, what has the fiscal '25 budget been like to assemble and get to this point?
So Kevin, we actually start a budget process in November. We go through October Special Town Meeting, and then we have those next few weeks to look at finances, and we start the budget process in November. So a memo goes out from my office to all the departments to start assembling their budgets, which we look for right around December 15th. And at that point, it's the departments will put in what they're going to need to operate their department through the next fiscal year. We ask them to really be very prudent on what they're looking at, you know, for expenses and things like that. So it starts early. Of course, there's a lot of what-ifs and questions that we have to wait on because we have to wait on the school, which is a very large part of our budget. And with the schools, their operating budget, they start their budget, their process in October when they get their enrollment, but we actually don't really see numbers from them until possibly their preliminary introduction of a budget during one of their school committee meetings in February. But we start conversations with the school. Mary Beth Carter, Town Administrator from Whitman, and myself have sat with Superintendent Jeff Simonak. We've had conversations of where both towns are as far as our fiscal health and what we can afford for assessments for the schools, the operating assessment. And then we kind of go from there. We continue to assemble our budgets as they come in from the departments. We put a whole document together and present a preliminary budget. We have a great accountant, Eric Kinseriff, who joined us last year, and he's been a wonder to work with, with helping put all the numbers together. He's got the spreadsheet, so we sat and put everything together and saw what our fiscal, where our health was at that point. Once the schools hit us with their preliminary assessment, that's when tornado turmoil began because their assessment at 10.2% for the town of Hanson and then 11.88% for the town of Whitman was far above the 5% that we usually would put in as a placeholder for our budgets. So then we have to start conversations on where we can cut our budget to be able to meet an operating budget of that size, and it's just not fiscally possible. Our growth is only 2.5 due to a prop 2 and 1/2, which does not meet their growth. I mean, 2.5 cannot possibly meet a 10.2% increase, you know, assessment. So the only way that we can meet something like that is to use all our free cash, which is basically our savings account that we use to purchase capital items or for repairs that we didn't know about. Last fiscal year, we had the back of the town hall that we had a board fall off one of the below windows and saw that there was a lot of mold and rot underneath, and it happened to be a lot of the back of town hall due to water getting in underneath the siding. That was a $56,000 repair job that we needed to happen before that water got into the town hall. So that free cash is kind of our savings account for issues like that. And if we have to use all of that to supplement a school assessment, we have nothing in our savings account, and we cannot possibly do that. So there was a lot of conversations with the schools, and the school committee did vote at their last school committee meeting to bring their assessment down with 7.68%, which was a $910,000 cut in the school budget, which still leaves us short, you know, from our 5% and then the additional 2.68%, which is an amount of $372, $372.141. That's the delta between the 5% that we've placed in our budget and the additional to fund the schools. And that's what our override question is going to be focused on.
Is there any, this is an annual exercise where the annual assessment that comes in from the regional school district usually is a lot greater than the placeholder that each town puts in place saying, okay, we're going to reserve this. This will be the spot in our budgets. And it seems as though there's right up until town meeting, there is a lot of discussions, and sometimes there's an 11th hour reprieve where, oh, we happen to discover, and then it's able to close the gap and be able to present a level town budget at town meeting. Is there any possibility that the $300,000-plus deficit can be made up, or is it basically all the covets have been checked and the last resort, it's an emergency stopgap, but it's a prop 2 and 1/2 override?
Well, a lot of it for the schools focuses on what the state, the Chapter 70, what the state comes up with their funding. We've heard this year, there's budget shortfall in the state with their revenues. So the funding for the schools was a lot less this year than it has been in the past. So that, the schools have to make up that somehow, so they look to the towns for that. And then we have to find a way to support that. You know, everything, services come with a cost, you know, inflation is up all around. So the only way that we can meet it is to basically cut back, which would be personnel, town hall hours possibly for when departments are open or closed, a reduction in staff. So there's a lot of really tough questions, and it's not unheard of that the schools receive a last-minute grant or a last minute, some funding from the state that's increased that they haven't had before. They lower an assessment, and then we kind of go back and forth, which happened in 2021. This year, I think for the first time, well, since I've been here, we have a budget that's going into the warrant that's going to be posted that pretty much is the most accurate budget that we don't foresee at this point having changes, drastic changes that would require a change in this. Because normally, we have our most accurate budget that's in the informational warrant, but this year, we're putting the budget that we have in the warrant that will be posted. And if there are changes to that, it will be in an informational warrant, but I think this is the first time that we really have a most accurate budget in this. Making up that $372,000, again, unless something drastic happens between now and May 6th, I don't foresee a lot happening with that.
So I believe that a town meeting, that the residents have, do they have to approve a prop 2 and 1/2 override? Are they, is it, it's up for a vote? So give me kind of what has been going through your head that, okay, if the town is willing to pass it, great, but I have to be prepared in case they don't. What are some of the scenarios that you're looking at? You, as you mentioned, you know, town hall hours would be affected, and you know, what else would you have to cut into in order to make up this gap?
We have to, we have to look, we have to personnel. You know, we have a lot of departments that only have two people. So that would be cutting back some full-time folks to part-time, eliminating positions altogether, a three-person department goes down to two-person department. You know, we're already bare bones in town hall, so it's, residents will have to get used to less hours in some of the departments, and they, you know, it'd just be a different mindset. I mean, we're here till 8 o'clock on Tuesdays. We may not be able to do that because if a department only has one person who works on 8 o'clock on Tuesdays, that might be one of the reductions. So no 8 o'clock Tuesdays. Fridays, most people are here, departments are here on Fridays. If we have to cut back, those departments may not be open on Fridays anymore. So that will be some of the scenarios that we have to look at. And then some services may have to be cut. I mean, you know, unfortunately, we have some services in town that are not essential services as far as like a first responder or medical emergencies, but there are services that they provide for something for the community, you know, like our library, for instance. There may have to be some cuts to the library for hours if we have to do that, and that would be a disservice to the community. They run so many programs for families and children that it really would be a disservice, but it's not considered an essential service. So that would be somewhere we have to look at. We really have to look at everything. And with the growth of the town, we have 207 units, new housing units that are being built, you know, developed right now. Cutting our police department and fire department, if you were to do that, you basically, you're playing with people's lives. Because if you have less first responders, if they're responding to one emergency and another one happens and you don't have the staff, you're looking to other towns who may not have the staff. So, you know, we're playing, we're rolling the dice, we're rolling the dice.
And it's important to tell folks that some of what Lisa is saying is, it's not something that's etched in stone, but these are things that you have to evaluate and take a look at. That's important if in fact that override, that prop 2 and 1/2 override isn't passed at town hall and that ultimately has to be passed at the ballot box. And I see where it passes at town meeting, but then, you know, doesn't necessarily do well. But it's not unheard of that Hanson will not. They have passed overrides in the past, so it's something to bear well. Let's, while we have Tony sitting here, let's talk a little bit about, and you can kind of help prime the pump, and that is another article for consideration on the town meeting warrant is the MBTA Communities Act that's about an overlay district rezoning, so to speak, if you will. Talk a little bit about what Tony's had to do, what the town has had to do to prepare for this information for the folks to vote.
Yes, so the dreaded MBTA Communities law. There is a lot of misguided information out there. The state, this was signed into law by Governor Baker, it is now being affected on the towns. And basically, it is to address housing shortage in the state. As you mentioned, there's 176 towns that are impacted by this. And one way the state has said, you know, this is a way that we could generate housing is to look at half a mile radius, correct?
Yeah.
Around commuter rail stations, MBTA stations, to see if housing can be developed around in that, within that radius. What people don't understand is there are private property owners that aren't required to do anything at all to their property, and this is mainly a create a zoning type of statute. We're not building the housing, we're just creating a statute, I mean, I'm sorry, a bylaw. And Tony has done so much work with making sure we're compliant because there's consequences, serious consequences from the state if we don't comply with this statute. And I will let Tony take it from there because he's kind of the expert on all of that.
Tony, can I kind of talk to us, lay the groundwork, what you've had to do to kind of prep for this and kind of get this all, what has been involved in order for this to be able to come before the people to take a vote?
Well, I came to Hanson in 2021 as town planner, and the, they had just sort of started with the MBTA guidelines. As Lisa said, this was a law that was passed in 2020. So at the end of 2021, they had preliminary guidelines, and as the process was going to continue, we would get final guidelines. And so there was final guidelines, and there was revised final guidelines, and then there was a revised, revised final guidelines. So the way it works is there was rapid transit communities, commuter rail communities, and commuter adjacent communities. Hanson Falls under the commuter rail communities. The Commonwealth had determined that you have to create a district of 50 acres minimum, and the number of housing units within that district, they looked at for commuter rail, I believe it's 15% of your housing stock, or they, 15 units per acre. So if you take 15 units per acre times 50 acres, you're going to get 750 units. So that's where that 750 comes in. That's the floor that the state had set. That number is greater than the 15% of our housing stock. So technically, Hanson would create 750 units. But all the towns have to do is create the district. The towns are not required to create, put up the buildings. The towns are not required to update the infrastructure. The private sector will drive whether or not any housing is created. All you have to do is create the district, and it has to be within half a mile, well, preferably, it's within half a mile of the train station. And the whole idea is to create walkable communities. And there's an affordable component. It's not a requirement, but there is an affordable component in there. So that's, all it is, is just a district. The private sector will guide whether it gets built. Will Hanson ever see 750 units? The state, as they look at it, is this isn't a building mandate, so they understand that. Probably not, you know? So the consequences of not complying, as we've seen with other municipalities, is immediate is if you don't comply, you get completely shut out of grants. There's a whole, there's about 13 grants that you're immediately cannot apply for. Any other types of grants, the non-compliance will be a consideration. Hanson, in the last two years I've been here, we've received just under $500,000 in grant monies, and so that would immediately go away. So that's, that's the detriment to the town. But I mean, it's, it's up to the voters in the end, what they wish to do. But that's all we have to do is the understanding is you just have to create the district. We're not building the housing.
And if I could kind of jump in here just for half a second, and that is, is that, please reiterate that, again, you're just basically just laying the foundation. So if there is someone, and the town isn't going to actively seek private, you know, builders to come in here or developers to come in here, it's just there in case a developer sees the community as being something that fits their particular plan and their particular model. Again, it's just, it's there.
Right.
And as you said, it may or may not be utilized. We don't know if it'll be used up to the 750 housing units, but it has to be at least offered, correct?
Correct, yeah. So part of the process when they went through all that to determine compliance is the state issued basically workbooks and with Excel spreadsheets and had algorithms. So we were able to receive two different grants for technical assistance. So we had two different, O'Colly Planning Council and VHB, they assisted in plugging all those numbers in and seeing if the district that we've created fits the model, and so it does. So we're compliant there, so, and we have a current action plan in compliance. And again, like you said, it's true, is we're not actively going to go out and seek, this overlay district is similar, if you will, to our flexible overlay district along the Main Street corridor, which allows currently for a mixed use of retail and residential space. We have a project down on Main Street that's currently under construction. So this is, again, it's just any other district in town, like the flexible overlay, a Residence A business, it's just a district. We're not creating the housing. It's just an opportunity for the private sector if someone, like you said, came in and said, geez, okay, that is, Hanson looks like a great place to develop, and approach the, someone that has property in that area and say, hey, I'd like to buy it from you. It's that, you know, capitalism is what it is basically. And they, and they come up with a project. That project would have to go through an approval process. It has to meet all the building codes, it has to meet the state sanitary code Title 5, it has to meet all the Wetlands Protection Act requirements. So this isn't a case of them circumventing like a 40B or what's known as a comprehensive permit and getting relief. The town would still have site plan review. The thing is, you just can't deny it. This is as of right versus a lot of times where you have a multifamily situation that is going to be a special permit. This is an as-of-right type of situation. And, and the, and the adoption of it is, this bylaw would be adopted by a majority vote versus what would usually be a two-thirds vote.
And if I could ask you, ask you the facts, not that you haven't been giving me the facts, but the acronym facts, and that is, what have been the frequently asked questions that have been posed to you or that, that have come to town hall? Lisa, you can jump in on this as well. But what have been some of the questions that you've been asked? Maybe there's been a redundancy, and this will offer an opportunity for folks who watch this, who may not have heard the question in its entirety or heard the answer that you can at least give some insight on?
Well, we have up on our webpage, and folks can go to our webpage, the Town of Hanson webpage, and even the Planning Board webpage, and I have an FAQ sheet, which is a frequently asked questions sheet that the state has put out. So all the information has been put out by the state. There's also slides, and it explains in really simple terms, what is the MBTA zoning? What are you required to do? One of the big things, the question is, can the state do this? Can they require us to do this? And the Attorney General just recently put out an FAQ sheet, which is up on our webpage, and the answer is yes, that under the state constitution, they have the ability to do this. So it's, you know, it is something that can be done. Now, obviously, there's another community that is fighting, fighting it.
Yes, you could say it, the town of Milton right now is being made, is being made an example because they had originally passed it at town meeting.
Correct.
And then had a referendum vote to say, no, we want no part of this. Now, the state's Attorney General is partaking in a lawsuit.
Right.
So this is, this is the repercussions of voting no and saying, no, we don't want this in our community.
Right. And until the, the information that comes out of the AG's office and the webinars is to the towns, don't wait to see what the court case is because you'll immediately lose those grants. And that's a big factor, especially for Hanson, because as you see, we fiscally, we're strapped. So those grants are big, big help in trying to do some kind of infrastructure, such as one, one grant we have is for pedestrian improvements down on Main Street, others looking at development of some town property. So it's, it's a big loss if we don't get the grants. You know, if the court case comes out that Milton is right and the Commonwealth is wrong, then this would go away because the courts would say it's, it's not, it's not valid. So it's one of those, if we stay within the law, we get the grants. If we don't, we're going to lose the grants. That's a fact. We know we'll lose the grants if we don't, if we don't follow it. But like I've always said, it's up to the voters, but that's, that's the information.
And what to throw in, I know you're getting ready to, you're getting ready to answer, but I just one little quick thing. Knowing that if you, if the town votes this down and has to sue, town council doesn't come free, you have to pay their costs, and that's something that's figured in. So is, you want to say something?
Well, exactly. You know, the Attorney General's office has made it clear that they will, they will start process against towns, lawsuits against towns that don't comply. So do our taxpayers really want to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on legal fees? And usually, it's, you know, it's not just one attorney. You need to have a team of attorneys defend you if you've got the Attorney General in the state suing you. So that's thousands and thousands of dollars. And again, all we're doing is creating a district. We're not forcing people to build the housing. We're not advertising, we are not building it. So, you know, weigh, weigh what we've got, the circumstances and consequences. Is it really worth it? I mean, in the end, most likely, we're going to lose. So the only thing we've done is strapped our already fiscally-strapped budget even more with legal fees.
Tony, anything else we want to make sure we mention, anything that we might have forgotten in regards to this, in regards to the Communities Act, the MBTA Communities Act, and what it's designed to do, and do you feel like we've kind of really?
Well, again, just wrap it up for me is that the whole, obviously, the design is to create the affordable housing and create housing in general. That's the big thing, is creating housing in general and trying to create a walkable community around.
It's called transient.
Right. It's transit-related. So the whole idea is that most people would use the commuter rail, and you'd create neighborhoods. The creation of neighborhoods is not a new concept, and if anyone's grown up in the city, you grew up in neighborhoods that had everything within walking distance. It's just, I guess the state's trying it, just saying more of a suburban setting, but that's, that's all it is, is just, you know, it's to fill in the gap for housing shortage. But they understand, and you can go on and see, if you, if you go through mass.gov and type in the search engine, MBTA zoning, it'll give you all the information, all the facts of what is required of all the communities. I think the biggest thing is folks hear that we're going to get 750 units, and the whole idea is no, you're getting a zoning district that has a capacity, but the reality of, it is a capacity, but it's, what's the, what's the reality? It's something that may never reach that point.
Right, right. And the idea of having this conversation today with, with Tony and Lisa is not only to talk about where things stand fiscally for town meeting, but also make sure that we dispel any of the rumors or any of the misnomers as to this, this overlay district, the zoning for the MBTA Communities Act. So it's, thank you so much for giving that. Closing and wrapping things up, anything else of importance on the town meeting warrant that we should be watching for, any articles that, that come to mind that you want to touch upon, or do you feel like the financial part and the MBTA Communities Act are going to be the two that are going to be top of the list?
Top of the list. I do want to mention that there are two, there will be two articles on our Special Town Meeting warrant that are in relation to ARPA funds. So we did find out from Plymouth County that the town still has 1.5 million in ARPA funds available. However, the Plymouth County bucket of ARPA funds is restricted. It's, it's very restricted on what you can use it on. The other pot of money that came in from the Treasury, you could use it for any general government purpose. The pot of money that is with Plymouth County is very restricted. So you have to fall into the categories that they allow, and it's for health, infrastructure, in, you know, categories that fall within. So there are two articles on our Special Town Meeting. One is to purchase a new ambulance for a fire department. Basically, the newer, the newest ambulance in the fire department is from 2014. So this is, we're going to use some of that money, about $450,000, to purchase a new ambulance with the ARPA funds. It has to be approved at town meeting. And the other one is to use the remainder of the funds for the Pratt Place culvert. Tony's been working for years since he's been here to try and get a grant for that culvert, which is in not great shape right now. And we have been turned down because of it's not wide enough, it's not long enough, it's, it always misses one criteria, which basically disqualifies it from the, from the grants. So we can use it as an infrastructure, like a waterway infrastructure, some of the ARPA money, well, the rest of the ARPA money to address that culvert. But again, that requires town meeting approval. So that, those are two articles that are in the Special Town Meeting warrant because again, we're under a deadline of spending this money that we do need town meeting approval on.
And I believe that, if I'm correct, the ARPA monies, does that sunset at the end of this year? Is it 2024, 2025?
2025.
Okay.
So we, that's why we need it on the special, so we have the money available immediately because we need to do the engineering, the design, we need to do the bidding and things like that. So there's a lot, and then we have to present a report and a plan to Plymouth County. Basically, there, there is a deadline coming up over the summer that we need to play, submit this report to them. this report to them about the plan to spend the rest of the money. So there's a lot of deadlines we need to meet.
Did you want to mention, say anything about Pratt Place real quick?
No, we're, as Lisa pretty much summed it up, we're trying to get, I've tried over the last couple of years to fit it, this project into certain grants, and it's just come up short. You know, one thing I'd like to throw about a deadline on the MBTA is that because we're commuter rail, our deadline for compliance is December 31st of 2024. So once that passes, you know, which is why you see town of Milton, they were a rapid transit community that were required to be compliant by the end of 2023. So because of the non-compliance, that's where you see the, the court case happening. So we have to be compliant by the end of this year.
Okay. Something to keep in mind. Anything that we haven't touched upon before we close? Or do you feel that we've kind of touched on all the important topics?
No, I think we've touched the important topics. And, you know, our office is always open for people, anybody who wants to come in and get more information. Tony's also available for more information, so we are here to answer questions and provide information to anyone out there, any of our residents that want to get some more information. So.
Well, Lisa, Tony, thank you for joining me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for having us.
You got it. And thank you for tuning into a program like this. It's important that you get an understanding of things before you make a vote, before you attend town meetings, so you're better informed. And you know what? If you're not sure, again, town hall, so there are folks always who are available here, and the town website. Yeah, that's what's flashing right now on the screen as you're watching. If you will, visit that, visit that website to find out more information, whether it's about the MBTA Communities Act or about the town meeting warrant. You can do that. But until our next conversation, you have a good day.